There we go.
The mall is crying, she is.
We're going to get started. I'd like to call the August 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting order. It's successful by Zooms and it's also be in the building by Scott Wilson in the back. So our first action item would be to approve the minutes of the July 25th, 2024 meeting. If there, I'd like to ask for a motion of second. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections to the planning minutes from July 25th? Here it sounds to be a voiceover, all favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have an open forum for any items that are on the agenda? Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak to address any of the items that are on the agenda? We also have time at the end of the meeting for anything other than the agenda items. Not seeing any requests? Okay, we'll move on to our first item of business, subdivision and land development application. This is BFT Elbersen, 401 South Twin Valley Road. Jenny, do you want to?
Yeah, I can.
Through the.
Yep.
An explanation and review and review of our.
Sure. Um, this lot's at the corner of Hemlock and South Twin Valley. It was subdivided off of about 17 acre parcel sometime in the last year or two. That parcel was split zone between the southern part of it was agricultural and the upper part was business industrial. Which is right on the edge of kind of that industrial park section of the township up there. Right on the border of Kenar and stuff too. So within that business industrial lot, Taylor Northeast has another facility about a half mile from there. They're looking to, no new buildings, but it'll be an overflow storage yard for some contractors' equipment. I did get forwarded earlier today, one of my, some of my comments we've often had, we want to kind of their specifics of what would be stored there. So. It says Taylor Northeast is an equipment company that sells material handling equipment such as forklifts and lift trucks. They have an existing location a half mile from the proposed project area. As a result of their current business operation, their existing location is beginning to be limited on equipment storage space. The proposed storage yard would be used to store mobile equipment as well as delivery vehicles. The storage yard would not be used to assemble or repair equipment as they perform such activities in their existing facility. The anticipated truck traffic would be one to two trucks a day and would be used as an overflow area for mobile equipment deliveries and storage. The bulk of what they store there, it says, will be drivable under its own power. Anything that is not drivable will be unloaded via forklift and stored on the ground. So more or less it's conscious of being kind of parking, storage area. It has two access points off of Twin Valley Road. Looking at zoning requirements, contractor storage yards are permitted. Setbacks are 50 foot from all yards, so they need to adjust their setback lines on there. But the yard area delineation doesn't if those 50 foot setbacks have shown. They need impervious coverage. Items, there may be a couple areas that are slightly over the 15% steep slope, so they will delineate those and make sure any disturbance meets our ordinance requirements. There's requirement in, the zoning ordinance that outdoor storage area shall be screened from the ravine way of joining residential uses. That property is wooded fairly so around three of the sides and they are proposing evergreens along the frontage. There is one section that's within the ravine way that they'll have to scoop further into the site. But as we move on, the planning commission should think about the proposed end of landscaping. I've asked them to show delineated areas, we want to make sure they have actual full circulation paths so that emergency equipment can get in. And, you know, any trucks that'll be navigating can access that site without causing any backups. On to Twin Valley Road and as well as the trucks that are swinging out, you know, can make those turns. I think Twin Valley Road is known as only 17 foot wide there, which is a little narrower than, you know, our general standard. So we'll want to make sure that those turns out of that development can be made with the vehicles without crossing over the centerline. So that's most of the zoning comments. When I talked to their engineer, they didn't seem to have any issue, you know, with providing the requested information. For the SADO, planning commission should determine if it's a major or minor land development. Key things usually with the difference between the two is whether you have separate preliminary and final plan approvals. Whether landscaping is at the discretion of the planning commission or if they follow the full landscaping requirements. In the SADO, traffic study used to come into play. That traffic study was updated, those requirements with our SADO amendments that we did last year. So now they have to provide with their number of trips, the one to two per day. I don't think that will warrant any type of traffic study through there. Couple other SADO comments. There's some driveway grading comments regarding 4% within the first 25 feet of the driveway. Ensuring at least that first 20 foot of the driveway is paved. Storage yard itself is proposed to be gravel. Non-residential driveways are supposed to be curved with a minimum 15 foot radius. They're not proposing any water or sewer to the site. You know, there's not going to be any people stationed, you know, working, you know, on site. Really just for the storage of the equipment. And I mentioned the landscaping. If it's deemed a major land development, then they have to comply with the full requirements of Section 6.9. If it's a minor, then it defers to the planning commission. As we said, they did provide those evergreen trees along the frontage. From a stormwater standpoint, looks like the basins can meet all the groundwater recharge requirements. There are three watersheds, you know, kind of points of interest. One goes to the far north, north of the proposed basins. That one, the drainage area is being reduced to that point. The main drainage area to the basins does meet all of our peak rate reductions. Then there's a third discharge point along Twin Valley Road at the southern end of the site. Kind of lining up Twin Valley Road really along that frontage there. And they can't capture quite the full ends of the driveways. So it drives their peak rates slightly above the existing pre-development rates. Not more than exceeded by more than one CFS over what was pre-existing. So they are asking for a waiver just for that point of interest. There are other waivers regarding stormwater are to have some slopes where swales greater than the 9% maximum due to the topography of the site. They're showing the appropriate matting and stability for those swales. And also using plastic pipe instead of RCP for the basin outlet structure piping. Just keep all the pet materials the same. So. Everything else in the letter beyond those couple waivers they've asked for regarding stormwater, they've indicated that they can comply with. Planning commission has questions about what's proposed or the review letter? Do you have any other comments that?
All right, keep coming through, we'll just have a question, I'll hold them, try to figure out next stuff. Try to answer any questions I have.
Is this storage exclusively for equipment that is owned by what, Northeast?
P and E, yes. So they specialize in lifts, forklifts, you know, stuff like that. They're running out of space, so just maybe something, use it often, which is stored there.
But it's not going to run it out to other companies to store, couldn't have there or anything like that?
Kind of deeper there, so they actually have that.
Right, but just their stuff?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Where's the discharge that goes out on Twin Valley Road to New York?
Two basins.
It's a good discharge there.
Right, and then out along Twin Valley Road. Slight edges of the driveway that don't get captured, it just continues to run like a long forgotten line of Twin Valley Road.
Well, you're not going to, that's not getting to the gutter runoff on that old road.
Cause the existing gutter line runs that long, Twin Valley Road there.
Yeah, but you're showing it behind the electric line, electric lines on the bank.
Right, it would be, very first couple feet of the driveway and we won't be able to capture.
So this is, this one went along the edge, it's captured, this first part of the driveway. It's coming out to here.
The offside.
Yeah, it's kind of mostly offside, it's just the beginning of the driveway entrances. This little piece in there, so it's down by the bed in here. It's going to continue to run out. The roadway, yeah.
You have to talk to Don about that.
Okay.
Cause there's a good bit of water comes down here and they occasionally have to go maintain that. The other concern I have is on these driveways. So they're gonna, they slip back into, oh, this one doesn't, this one goes up. So all of the water from somewhere in here goes out on Twin Valley Road. I don't think it's captured in an N-Wall.
Some of it's, it's being directed overland.
So it's going to be super heavy.
So that first driveway entrance that's closest to the basin is going to be pitched to run overland into the basin.
Correct.
So you're gonna, you have pretty big foreplay that you make. Are they going to be delivered on like a little bit on a tractor trailer?
I would say the bigger ones would be, they do have smaller forklifts and smaller forklifts, it would be just a tractor trailer. It would be a mix of the tractor trucks.
Should, should we be concerned that the road is not wide enough? I know it's, it really can't widen that road because of the banks and where the electric lines are. But they're gonna, even, even with that width, they're probably going to take the whole road when you turn in.
Well, that's what, we asked for the truck turning plate, truck turning template so we can see what the impacts there are to determining, you know, modifications to be, are going to be made or if there is any widening in the vicinity of the driveways. That kind of stuff.
Yeah, I would suggest you talk to the roadmaster, talk to Don about what he thinks would be the best way for those driveways. To connect. The last question I have is, there, there is a. An end wall here. And. Is, is the desire for that end wall to be captured in that swale to get into that basin? But looking, looking at the grading lines, it looks like, it looks like. There's a lot of water that's going to go down there, it looks like there isn't, there isn't enough of waiting to burn.
Yeah, that's coming down to, this is their post development, the drainage area plan. Again, so it comes out, discharges the green, is there swale?
Yeah, I'm concerned about that here, about end walls.
So exactly when the end wall discharges into that swale, that it doesn't go over?
Yeah, it, it almost looks like it should. Should, or should be short, a little less plate and then. Where I'm talking is on the western side of the property, there is an end wall that discharges just short of the swale. And the swale is, looks to me like it's to go into your bigger basin, basin one. My concern is, is that you don't have enough restriction there to keep the amount of water that's going to go out of that pipe, keep it in the swale. I, I have to look that up. So it's this end wall here, I assume the intention is to go into the swale?
Yep.
It just, looking in this grading area, if. That's going to carry a fair amount of water.
Yep.
And it doesn't look like you have enough of a restriction to keep that from blowing out. And, and eventually cross, or crossing over the heat and into the hanging property.
I think the two foot deep channels there are kind of hard to see. 300 here flows through that to verify that, not over the top. I can double check and make sure.
Well, I guess a bit over the top, I just, I just thought maybe you should stop a little bit and, and that could just, it will spread to come around and saw.
Or. They put a manhole angle there down, it was coming more that forth than.
Yeah, certainly, not such a hard angle there.
I was just.
That might be more anxiety just from, so you don't end up with an unexpected impact on that joint there.
Anyone else make questions?
For the landscaping, what would be required under a major plan agenda?
Well, usually then everything comes in under a major plan or based upon length of street frontage, length of other property boundaries. Probably look at screening buffers from the residential uses on the other side.
This is, this is empty to our vote.
Yes, so.
So it would require, it would require buffering there, although this pad is about 30 feet lower than the existing grade along property line.
Right, and when I looked at the area, it looked like there was woods all the way around these sides.
Yeah, it's.
There were spare cans, I didn't invite out that way, but.
This is probably, this is kind of different.
So usually, I mean, there's landscaping apartments around parking areas, you know, based upon linear feet of parking and the ink loading areas, so. That may come into play.
Well, this is.
Too, but usually, you know, where there's existing vegetation.
This is BI, so that would have to be screened. This, this could possibly have to be screened. But I'm not, I'm not sure if that's, I own that behind me.
Gary, do you think planting trees here now, Hemlock is a road that gets in the morning. Sometimes people will cut through Hemlock because kids will cut through to get up to the school that way. Do you think planting evergreens on that corner there will interfere with like the line of sight?
Yeah, but that's one of her comments is that has to be pulled back.
Yeah, we have to show that clear sight triangle and they have to pull those that are closer to that basin, they're in the right right now. So they have to be pulled into the site. And then one of my comments was to show that clear sight triangle at Hemlock and Twin Valley, so they can, and they're clean. Their sight triangle locked there.
You're exactly right, there's a lot of traffic and they don't stop.
And those kids are in a hurry, they're still, they're running late, I guess that being a concern. We can still require.
Do you ever plan to put a building there, do they ever plan to put a building there someday? But if they go back with a land development plan for a building, they would get, they would get a benefit.
Yeah, any new non-residential building requires land development. So anything else, usually on any non-residential property that anybody wants to build, has to be committed for a land development waiver or for a land development approval. So there'd be opportunities to come in the future for any other development.
I mean, I think if you do adequate screening with what you're showing, I think that's where the impact will still push across the street.
Right, so they pretty much have proposed on that landscaping plan, you know, within every gap. You know, they are there and then I think the, let me see if they were six foot or eight foot. Number five is six, is what they proposed in.
Pretty good, I can put in, I can get a little bit more, I can get a little bit more tally issue coming in.
Well, the tally is a function of the county here, they're not, they're not proving any needs of transport for these people. I mean, I'm not going to excuse them, but, you know, as long as they have the property, it should be fine.
So I guess the first, the first item we probably really should address is are we okay with this being a minor plan? Will you take, you know, will you take action?
No, if you make further motions, we'll just know that it's a fine minor.
Susan, are you okay with a minor plan? Okay.
So.
Do we want to address the waivers?
You want to address the waivers? Yeah, yeah.
Go, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, so the three, the first one is not applicable because if it's a minor land development, it was just for a preliminary file. So the three waivers are to allow the plastic pipe that moves RCP for the basin outlet structures. To allow a swale grade greater than 9% provided they can slope show that the stability and velocity checks passed with the proposed matting. And the last one is for drainage area three, which is the one along Twin Valley Road. To allow the peak rates to be increased no more than one CFS for each of the designated stores. Just because due to topography, they can't capture the slight driveway ends in the, into the facilities.
Have they shown the netting and matting that they're proposing? Do you know what you're showing?
Yes, on the silver channel, we can hear a memo for taking their corner.
Second, do you need checking?
No, that's okay. The only thing, the only thing I would add, what we'll take action on all together, if the board wants to do that. Is just that you have a discussion with, with the roadmaster.
Right, so your waiver number four could be conditioned upon the roadmaster acceptance of the grading across those driveway entrances. So that the flow along the roadway is. Sufficient.
Acceptable.
Yes, that's a good word.
So are we, are we okay with taking them all together? All right, then we need a motion to, to recommend to the supervisors that they grant the waivers as listed with the addition of the discussion of number four. Being handled with the roadmaster. Okay?
Also.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor of recommending to the supervisors to support the waivers? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
Um, then they requested when I had a phone call with Holton ahead of the meeting. If the planning commission was willing to recommend conditional plan approval based upon complying with the review letter. Pursuant to our discussion about the roadway width and things like that, you could make a condition available for the review letter. But also for if the truck circulation plans warrant any necessary improvements along Twin Valley Road to, you know, for safely turning movements.
They need an NPDS for this, don't they?
Yes, they have.
Did you have that in your comments, I missed that.
Yeah, it should be.
That is submitted under review, man.
It's, it's under review?
Yeah, the NPDS is, but yeah, under the stormwater ordinance, comment number two, approval demands, plan by CCC, the NPDS part of it. As well as number five under Saturday.
Are we okay with, with recommending a conditional file, provided that they address all the items in the technicons letter, date will be August 19th? Okay with that? So we need to take formal action on that, so is I can make a motion?
So that's to consider it a minor land development plan, conditional final based upon technicons, August 19th letter. And do you want any comments in there about the roadway itself and the term improvements?
Well, that's in your letter.
Yeah, the truck circulation things are in there, so if we want to put anything specific in there that, you know, they need to provide any necessary roadway improvements that may be wanted for safety.
Are we okay with adding to the technicon? Okay. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, thanks. Any further questions? Are we clear on what, what the motion is? To look at it as a minor, minor subdivision or minor land development and recommend final based on the August 19th letter? Eric Collins, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There we go.
Possibly any like truck circulation plans between now, like ahead of the board meeting, that would help.
Yeah, actually, we were able to get into your comments this week and have us to address. Yeah, actually, we were able to get into your comments this week and have us to address.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Are you the only one here from Taylor?
I am. I actually didn't call her.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any of the Taylor prep scheme.
Not that I know of.
All right, just checking.
All right.
Okay. The second item under subdivision and land development applications is a minor subdivision plan from Christian and Katie Stolzus, address 410 Broad Street.
Yes. All right. So this property is split between Salisbury Township and Lancaster County and Honeybrook Township. They just recently had gotten stormwater approval and a building permit from Salisbury Township. The driveway comes into Honeybrook, so we reviewed that in a bit for what will be proposed lot one. So they've been working on those improvements over there, but they did one with subdivision to 19.92 acre lot. A variance that actually been granted in early 2023, so you may or may not remember that, to allow the second lot, which is shown as remaining lands, to be just shy of the ten acre minimum in the agricultural district. So by that variance, you know, that lot complies at 9.26 acres for a lot area. There's no development shown on that lot. It's going to remain an agricultural use as of now. So it's fairly straightforward, you know, subdivision with no improvements. Or especially for others. So this qualifies as a minor subdivision plan. You'll have to set the minimization prior to recording of the plan. They did actually give me, sorry, number three, if you could give me the draft legal descriptions, those are probably. They either have to do sewage planning approval or non-milling waiver for that lot as a minor subdivision. The planning commission determines any landscaping required, and then they also need Salisbury Township approval. So. One of those fairly straightforward ones when nothing's really proposed, it's just the creation of the new lot. So do you guys have any questions on what's being proposed or the lot configuration? All the frontages in Honeybrook, it's the real of the lots that falls within Salisbury.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
So they're looking for a conditional file?
Yeah, there's no way. You just request it, and it complies, since they got that prior that I don't need to support the lot area, that it complies with zoning, they just have to address the sewage planning aspect of the subdivision, and then whether the planning commission feels any landscaping is necessary. It said there's nothing proposed on the remaining lands, which is one to the south, and then that existing, which shows that Barnamoni is just recently constructed there, and they have the driveway coming off of Broad Street. At the best of its, you know, remaining, yes, agricultural yield.
So I guess I'm asking for a motion that recommends conditional final, conditional the items into technicon, August 19th letter. Motion, second? Second. Any questions before we, before we vote?
And I'm assuming there was no comment on landscaping, so nobody feels any landscaping is necessary. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions? All in favor of the motion in a second? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is a land development sketch plan. Tom Amos is here with Paul from Seven Forty Park Road. They propose storage facility for fifteen pad sites.
Yeah. So this was submitted as a sketch plan for a formal zoning review to determine what zoning relief would be necessary for the proposal. Jason Chander from Impact Engineering is here. So I'll let him give just a brief introduction, and then we can talk about the zoning comments that were in the review letter. There would be no formal actions required by the planning commission. They just want feedback basically on the proposal, and if they were to pursue the zoning variances, you know, what the planning commission's estimates on those would be.
Thank you. I'm getting at a plan we put together today, just has some aerial photography, so we can see some of the surrounding area. We were hired by Amos to call off news. He bought this ground in 1997. It's eleven and a half acre vacant piece of lawn ground. There are some environmental features that the plan demonstrates. We were hired to investigate the feasibility of developing a piece around with a self-storage use, contractor storage use. Amos feels that that need is in your community and that this development would be successful there. A little bit about the property, it's on the air, but we're very planned. The tract of land is crossing the ball course on the south side of Park Road. We bought some of the stuff to the left of the road. It drains from north to south. There is a, there's a problem on the north side of the road, and that is charged from under the stream that comes under the road, and then it runs from north to south. Into a larger stream. Both of those streams, floodwater, preparing buffers for your ordinance. And then the southern stream, does have a floodplain that's mapped by P. The. The stream on the south end is. Honey and tree territory to, you know, Westbury, the Red Bull Creek. In addition to the carrying buffer, since it's a high quality water shed, there's actually a hundred state all chapter one of Florida partners, a hundred and fifty footer carrying buffer from top to back. So that's actually delineated in a light blue color on the air colored area. So there, there's some constraints. There's some. Things we're trying to get engineer around and develop around, we're respecting the buffers, we're respecting the floodplain. And you can see in the, confirmed by Jennifer's review, the Ag District doesn't contemplate this use in, in, in its location. So of course, this would be going to the zoning board for use. Doesn't front on a larger road, after or arterial traffic, blowing, basic case. So that would be another variance we need. And this floodplain. Your ordinance is a little unique. There's protections against natural physical floodplain, the floodwater, the height of it, that FEMA maps, and then as part of the land development plan, hopefully we can get to after the hearing, I will prepare a full D cap floodplain study in addition to the approximate FEMA map. But your ordinance also has some protections affiliated with soils, with seasonal high water table, hydro soils like that. So there's another variance we need to develop within the community identified floodfront area. I think that's the right term. And that's simply by based on soil type. So later on, we'll probably investigate that soil type a little bit and, and see if it is a backwood hybrid like the, the mountain says. But the main objective is that we're not going to be raising floodplain by, not developing the floodplain, but we can't do anything about the, the whole site is pretty much covered with this soil type that's community identified areas. Self-storage, you kind of, is a quiet use, doesn't have a lot of traffic, doesn't have a lot of utility use, no sewer, no water, nothing like that. Amos feels there is a need in the community. We can't fit in well here. There's mental neighboring structures in the area, concealed area. Do you think it would be a good fit? So we'd be happy to answer questions.
Is there already work going on in that area?
Is there much work being done in the area of the land, anyone?
Like other building, you mean?
No, like earthwork, like. I thought it went by there and noticed.
No, no.
Well, there was through the insurgency, very much insurgency, Amos did coordinate that, and I think there was some agricultural modifications in there. So that could have been what goes happening.
So this property is currently just being formed?
Yes. Is there crops right now, Amos, or?
Your final plan, population target area here?
Uh, everything in yellow.
Everything is red and yellow.
Yeah. So we have thirty-two foot. Paid access between the fifteen buildings, if you come in off of Park Road. There's some open paved area up front where he, he is going to, if there's opportunities, just want us to rent a little space for our, our V's is a big thing now they propose. There is some area for outdoor storage, which he, he'd like to pursue. He is, he is aware that he would have to fence the entire development. There'd be screening required. Probably pursue the fence with the vinyl strip to screen, things like that.
What's going to be stored here?
Well, I think it'd be the traditional, either going to be the traditional business or residential customer, or they're just renting monthly to store things for. It could be contractors storing equipment there until they pull out to use. But there won't be like. A business propensity here. There's no office, there's no, you know, there's no plumbing or anything. It'll just be, you know, the storage of materials.
Do I make a comment, Jason?
Sure, yeah.
A lot of times in these storage buildings, you will find they're used for overflow for retired people to park their cars or their four, four wheels or whatever. And along with that, you might have a landscaping guy that does summer mowing and wants to park his vehicles because he's not allowed to in town, so he'll prep a, a bay or whatever from Amos and park in his mowing equipment. Then in the morning, he goes and gets them, goes out and mows and puts them back at the end of the day. That's the sort of thing that you generally will see.
What's the dimension of the buildings?
Uh, there's fourteen buildings that are thirty feet by seventy-four feet. Now, that's a little off length, but we're, we're on the western setback line, and then we're against the preparing buffer to the east.
How's the Chinese building?
Thirty by seventy-four.
Thirty by seventy-four.
And then the northernmost building, they're sure they got a little mowing, so that is a thirty by one hundred. Amos's initial desire was a thirty by one hundred. All the buildings meet that size, but we just don't have that with the real estate to.
Just.
Head down the hill.
Just want to point out.
And Nelson Ross, you'd be the general contractor.
Correct. I'm Nelson P. Wild, but I want to point out that these many storage buildings, just so you're aware, they're not whole buildings that he will rent out for that size. So a thirty by whatever, one seventy might be divided in half, and let's say it might be twenty by fifteen, it might be ten by fifteen, it might be six by fifteen. There's going to be multiple sizes of small units, and you might have maybe a fifteen or a twenty foot wide pull through. Maybe there's going to be a need for a couple pull trips or a whole, a whole thirty foot width is what I'm saying, like maybe a twenty by thirty or a thirty by thirty. But that's probably the biggest you will see in those areas in the storage buildings.
And they would be a metal building?
Yes, they are. Concrete pad with turned out slab for the frost, and they'd be ADA compliant. They would have those met, needs met. There would be some of those for each, for each unit put up.
So Jen, these storage self-storage, they're allowed in all commercial?
Yeah, they're probably allowed in business industrial. I'm not sure if they're in mixed use commercial. But as you mentioned, there would be, need the use variances. They need a variance for the perby is covered. They're proposing sixteen, just over sixteen percent, which is five percent allowable. As you mentioned, they do have the soils that are community identified flood hazards. So unless they do a soil study and find that that's not really representative of the soils that are out there, they would need a variance for the building development in there, special exception for the driveway within those areas. There are specific use requirements in the ordinance for self-storage units, as Jason mentioned in the beginning. Access for those is supposed to be from a collector or arterial roadway, so they would need a variance for that. The self-storage unit use requirement also require a minimum of eight foot high open fence with a lockable gate. There are provisions with regards to the screening in there if there's any boat or RV parking. So if you got to the land development stage, they would need to comply with whatever the new specific requirements are for that type of outdoor storage outside the units. We talked about types and structures to show compliance, any outdoor areas of outdoor storage. So they're having to meet all those specific use requirements that are in there. If there's any that they can't meet, they would need to request zoning relief for those as well. So screening is a big part of those requirements. It's just, you know, that ultimately would need to be provided. And from a seller's standpoint, I just made a couple comments. Whether you consider it a major or minor land development, so if they got to that point, they would know how to design a plan. If the limit of disturbance exceeds an acre, they would need an PBS permit, and they should be due to traffic study requirements to determine if any type of traffic study would be required. And like you said, it sounded like there could be quite a few different types of storage in there, that it could be the, you know, some of the units may only be the people that come in once a month to, you know, get something that they stored in there. But if they rent it out as any type of contractor, you know, working in there and storing his equipment in there, he would be coming in more frequently. So they should, I would probably recommend really think about what total potential uses may be in there. It may be in place of a contractor's storage yard and a self-storage facility. Can be kind of semantics, but typical self-storage facility isn't necessarily, to most people if you say that, the contractor with the mowing equipment example that was given. So we may, as part of it, if you went for a zone here, listed as both uses to allow some flexibility in there.
Jen, what do the ordinance say about storage hazard materials?
Pulled up wording. I'm pretty sure hazardous materials are prohibited.
Is it in the floodplain or the flood?
It's not in the FEMA delineated floodplain. It is in what our floodplain ordinance calls the community identified flood. It is in what our floodplain ordinance calls the community identified flood hazard areas, which is based upon hydro soils like the coast area. Silt loo.
So you got emergency vehicles, if they're going to pull down, they got to back all the way out, there's no turnaround for emergency vehicles if one of these, one of these storage areas catches fire.
Well, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm sure the fire truck would, it'd do three-point turn, they could pull down, I think they could turn around to the north end, but they could pull between two of the units and then back to the west and then straight out again. I think there's enough risk for that. Thirty-two feet between all the buildings, all buildings closer to thirty-two feet.
To answer, just before we move off of Susan's question, the regulations for self-storage units be, all storage shall be located within an enclosed building except for any boat or recreational vehicle which may be stored outside designated areas, provided they are screened so as to not be visible from adjacent streets, residential uses or residential rezoned land. The storage to partially dismantle, that inoperable, unlicensed or unregistered vehicles is prohibited. And then the next provision is to store flammable liquids with the exception of gas tanks of boats or RVs stored outside. Highly combustible or explosive materials or hazardous chemicals shall be prohibited. So that may get into the lawn equipment-
They'll have to take the fuel tanks out.
Yeah, fuel tanks.
Somewhere else, not in the building.
Right, they would be able to, you know, be inside there or that's where it gets into the-
What was your opinion?
Well, that's between the mixed use between the self-storage and the contractor's storage yard of what can actually be stored on there. And then as they were to get building permits for each of the units, they'll have to disclose what would be in there. Storage-wise, they would have to meet the building code requirements for whatever materials may be stored. But yes, ultimately-
You'd only be able to see that that's not being got any complaints.
You wouldn't, unless a fire or something happens or you get a complaint. So it's one of those things that's difficult to come up with.
I think the first thing we need to determine is what the planning commission's position on what our recommendation is going to be, whether we would recommend or not recommend, whether storage units are permitted in an ag, in the ag zoning district. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of waivers that they're requesting, some of which may, well, the sixteen percent, that's not going to go away, that'll get worse probably.
So, I mean, yeah, starting point basically is the use itself. So basically, it would be a mix between self-storage units and what you would consider the contractor's storage yard.
I have a comment I'd like to make. I just was being, answering you honestly, what I see going on in storage unit, it's going to be rented as a many storage unit, the same as all that. So I was only answering you honestly, it's not that we're seeking contractors. I just answered you honestly what happens, because we've built these before and I know what goes in, and I answered you honestly. So I feel that you're holding against me for answering you honestly.
I just feel like this does not go within ag area. This is just, is completely, has no resemblance of an ag use at all. I mean, that, that's a lot. I mean, first of all, I think it's a little ridiculous, you're dragging down the road and there are all these big, huge buildings, I mean, it just is, I just think that's too much for that. Especially along where the streams are, you have all these elements here. I just think when you have an ag property, there's multiple other things you can do, this just isn't, I just personally don't think it's a good fit for that.
Are you planning to go to zoning hearing board regardless?
Well, Amos will make that decision, I don't know if he's ready to answer that yet.
So, so what are you, what are you asking from us this evening?
Well, tonight was to hear some feedback, that can be reported to the zoning hearing board. And feedback if we are able to accommodate any requests, that gives us an opportunity to do that prior to applying to zoning hearing board.
So then I think we should take a position on what, how we feel about this, because we may not see them again if they decide to go to zoning hearing.
Well, all zoning hearing applications come with planning commission, that's standard township practice. So you would have an opportunity to take your formal position on the actual zoning hearing application. So what I would say tonight is if you, if they were to choose to proceed with the zoning hearing application, are there items that you would like to see included, you know, or shown as part of that zoning hearing application? Would you like to have, you know, a refined list of things that may or may not be stored in there, would you like to see a landscaping buffering plan?
I think everybody has storing in there, they're going to store them there where they want. And we already have enough problems regulating everything else around here, I just don't think we need to have another thing that's going to be a problem.
And so it becomes a problem, when people put stuff in there that's ten or two.
I mean, this, this also somewhat, well, it's up to the zoning board, but it's a pretty precedent setting. I don't know, if you're looking for some direction, I agree with Melissa, I think this is a big ask, to, to put those buildings into an ag zoning hearing, an ag zoning district. So I don't know, how rested are you?
No, I agree, I'm on the same page, I don't think the use fits the ag district at all, I don't see hardship in the state of the province. Or, I mean, part township doesn't want to hire local properties and a few of the land this year don't fill out other raises.
And I just think it would be really hard for people, especially fellow contractors, say they have a law company and had a trailer behind the truck. This road is so narrow, trying to get in and out of there with larger equipment, I think is a challenge. I mean, there's not even a shoulder.
And any feedback, if anybody wants to comment, any other questions from your end?
Is there any closing?
You know, all those comments would be met on land development plan, they'd be showed as far as the shoulders and stuff staying on the center line, you have to do the radiuses. I was looking, we could get, you know, some feedback continued to the zoning hearing board.
Oh, you're welcome, go to zoning hearing board, I mean, you can make the, you can make the application.
No, I know that, I was hoping to have some feedback for what you were looking for and go along.
Well, we appreciate your time, we heard you, and we'll, we'll decide what, what pathway to the next step.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for your honesty.
Yeah, you're welcome, that's the only way to do it.
Just let me know if you want to skip plans with us at all at the board superclass meeting.
When do you need to know, Mike?
I don't have yet an agenda you got to look through.
Yeah, I think the date of, well, they have a workshop, it would be the fourth, Anthony needs the eleventh, so probably like by the end of August, you know, end of next week maybe. I mean, if you need more time, let me know. But usually whenever, if there's any variance application comes in, whenever those come in, they do get reviewed by the planning commission and then the board, both committees, you know, take the position.
The next item is land development plan, Melvin Fisher, two eighty-four, long red, rural occupancy, which is a favorite.
Okay, so this one, Amos, they are looking to construct a new garden, all the property that would both search for the bakery as well as agricultural storage in there. And a new, you know, rural occupation in building, that's going to be, rural occupation is required to move. The land development process, it does meet the rural occupation requirements for the maximum size of a building that can be used. The building itself is a little over the six thousand square feet, but again, it's not all for the bakery. They'll need to manage the number of employees. The development falls outside the floodplain and repairing buffer areas. They're providing enough parking spaces, assuming there are no retail sales. I would ask that they take where any loading areas, are there's concrete areas shown off to the side of the building? I just wanted to be sure where the loading areas will be, and again, check the truck If there's any areas of waste disposal or outdoor storage proposed, they just need to be shown consistent with ordinance requirements. If there's retail sales, they'll need a little bit more parking. And they already obtained their sewage approvals from the health department, the existing driveway entrance is already paved. So that's the zoning comments. From the seller's standpoint, their net increase in the pervertious cover is actually less than a thousand square feet, so they didn't need storm orders, there's no storm order, design improvements, the driveways are existing, the parking area. They shall prioritize proposed development and generate enough trips for an traffic study with the pay the rural occupation, I don't think it's going to hit that requirement. I think we would just need waivers that look like, non-residential driveways are supposed to be curbed, and parking areas shall be a minimum of twenty feet from all residential units. The parking for the employees is along the side of the existing development. But again, it's all on the same property, so not from a residential unit on a separate lot. And then again, to get back to the major and minor land development plans, so if there's a minor landscaping, would be a discretion of the planning commission, otherwise you would need full requirements. So, I, it's fairly straightforward, you know, the building's to the rear of the existing, you know, development on there. You guys have any comments or questions about the proposed plan?
I'm not really sure, the building is going to be used for a bakery and agricultural storage.
Yeah, I believe it's a portion of boats, so as part of the building code, they would review the proposed building plans to make sure that the required separations between the two areas are provided.
Is there anyone here from the applicant? Okay.
So you can-
Can you go into a little bit more detail to answer Susan's question?
Yeah, the one side of the twenty-one hundred square feet is on a commercial, and the other side is, all right, where the bakery is would be in the commercial area.
Well, what exactly is going to be stored? I mean, we're talking about the production of food on the one side, and you're possibly having chemicals on the other side?
You have an attic, huh? No, that would be like horse, be a horse barn.
Okay, that's still a problem, I think, having a horse barn and a bakery in the same building. Does anybody else see a problem with that?
Is it gonna, it's gonna be, is it gonna separate it with a machinery wall or? And there won't be any access through?
Fireworks.
Fireworks?
It'll be fully encapsulated in the, in the fire, commercial fire.
For the bakery, well, either way.
I mean, the health department's going to have to come in and inspect it and make sure it's, it's all there for us.
And you expect it to be retail?
No.
You got it.
Is there a building there currently?
Yes.
Is that coming down?
Yes.
Yeah, they have a few on their existing features planned. There's two barns to be removed, one's almost two thousand square feet, the other one's twenty-three hundred, and there's some existing concrete, gravel and pavement. And cow hats that will put in, that are all being removed to make room for the building.
So this business, this bakery exists already or it does not exist?
Yes.
So you're operating the bakery there right now?
Yeah, under the department.
In one of these buildings that's already there?
Yeah, not, not in the ones that are being removed though.
Okay. And how many employees do you have?
About six.
And you get deliveries, like truck trailers or?
We get, well, no, we actually, we have to run and pick up and then they reuse. So it's just a pickup truck.
A pickup truck? And you then just distribute that to grocery stores or how do you?
So it's a bunch of, it's a bunch of little buildings that are, a few little buildings that are coming down, that are being removed.
Yeah.
And your cow pass. Were they concrete?
No, they're in here.
No, don't say that, I see that. I guess the first question is, are you okay with it being a minor land development? It's really, it's just kind of buildings that are in the center now, right in there.
These two right here, right here? Along the circle?
Yeah, yeah.
Did it perform a leave by?
It was.
Leave by, leave by scholars?
No. No, that's not what it was.
So your bakery currently is approved by the state and you get, do you get annual inspections and?
So are you okay with it being a minor?
I'm fine with it.
Susan?
I'm still having problems with the idea of having a bakery and a horse barn. I mean, you say you're approved by the state now, but are you currently in a horse barn?
We're actually in public public stable right now.
I'm sorry?
We're actually in public public stable right now.
Oh, that's great. I mean, I think that-
So this is an improvement?
It'll be a big improvement.
So, I mean, I think those aspects are, you know, they do have building plans in, you know, that are being reviewed and have to meet the building code requirements for both the bakery side and, you know, the required separation with the, you know, horse barn with the fire doors and things like that. And, you know, again, it's the health department that rules in on the, the food side things,
So it sounds like we're okay, Susan, and you feel better now that it's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Aaron, what do you think?
I mean, it sounds like an improvement, it's already existing, which building?
Which building is it, the bakery existing in right now, the one closest to, uh, Busman Road or?
No, the one-
Trees on both sides of the building, some shrubs between the parking area and the existing dwelling. Some evergreens off kind of the rear corner. So they have a total of six evergreens, six deciduous and six shrubs. They based those, they pulled out of the landscaping requirements. They required landscaping based upon building area size as well as off-street parking area. And use those numbers to come up with sticks of each type of landscaping. So, it'll provide some shielding between the dwelling and the parking area. You know, kind of buffer the new views of the new building. You know, a little bit if you're coming down Walnut Road, I guess heading east. The building itself is kind of situated behind that existing barn along Walnut Road, so. If you're doing a minor land development, does anybody have any comments on the landscaping that's proposed? If it's sufficient, if there's anything else that should be shown?
How close is the neighboring properties?
Pretty far.
Pretty distance between?
Yeah.
Beach here, and it's a huge one. So, the development's basically closest to Walnut Road than anything else. Right, I mean, you guys own the property across the street, I'll set it correct.
Yeah.
So, if you have a consensus, that is mine. Last chance. If you have a consensus that, um, then, then the next thing, the next item we probably ought to address are the waiver requests. Waivers required. Did they, did they provide a waiver request letter?
Yeah, it would just come off the-
So we have number six is the first one?
Yeah.
Under which is, um, the relief would be from existing driveway not being curbed. And then the, the second one would be number seven under subdivision land development review comments. And that is the waiver of minimum 20 foot for, for parking.
I believe that's at the end of two major sentences.
So, do we have a desired entertaining, some direction on waivers? Take them together, take them separate?
What's the difference between Airbnb and bed and breakfast?
So, a bed and breakfast actually has...
Well, the owner occupied.
Right, is owner occupied, you know, they're providing meal, lodging, you know, there's like a person on site, you know, like a manager, like so, a short-term rental, basically, I know ones that I've stayed in other places, you just like can self-check in and self-check out, and there's not, you know, another owner, um, you know, the owner doesn't decide on-site, so.
Bed and breakfast is approved use of breakfast?
In certain zoning districts, I'm not sure about that, I can check on that.
Is, is, uh, the supervisors, are they working on, um, like any?
Regulations.
Regulations for this, or is that something, what it will do with the comp plan?
There's been some mention of it, but I don't believe our office or the solicitor have been authorized to actually draft formal regulations for this.
So, we're going through the process of allowing Airbnbs, um, or moving them away, um, or possibly providing variances for these two, um, and we don't have any regulations surrounding them. The one we're up against is serving food. Do they have, you know, certifications and licenses to serve food? We don't know.
Are you saying they're not only bed and breakfast?
No, they're not only bed and breakfast, but they're providing food for the renters. They're putting an apple pie in the refrigerator, it's still providing food.
Yeah, I'm not sure about this, but you are correct, that we don't have any use-specific regulations for these. So, until there would be use-specific regulations in the zoning ordinance, then they would only be bound by any conditions put on them as part of the zoning hearing process. A bed and breakfast is a permitted use by right within the agricultural district.
But it's not providing breakfast, it's providing an apple pie.
Right.
So, it's not the same?
No, that's not, but somebody asked about bed and breakfasts. So, those are permitted by right in the Ag District, but as we mentioned, a short-term rental is different than a bed and breakfast.
But we didn't have any regulations on this till we get the comp plan, that could be another two to three years before that gets done. And in the meantime, these other ones are being approved with no regulations. What happens to them when any of the regulations are established?
Are they being approved, or they just start operating?
Well, right, so, anything that are, that go through the process and get a zoning hearing, such as the two that are on the agenda tonight, they would be bound moving forward by the conditions of their zoning hearing. If new regulations come out specific to Airbnb's and they don't comply with one of those provisions, I believe they would be considered existing non-conformity to those aspects. You don't necessarily have to wait until you get to the comp plan part two, then use zoning amendments for short-term rentals. Um, you know, if the planning commission as part of, you know, these hearings feels the township needs to proactively and sooner than later establish regulations for short-term rentals, so that we don't have too many of these that come in, um, before regulations are, you know, put in place. You know, then we can, there is still, you know, a time period that takes to do zoning amendments, so.
So, these two that are from this evening, they're different. One is asking for relief in the Ag District.
Yes.
The other is just looking for relief in the mixed-use residential.
Correct. As far as I know, the first one was, this was just an application that came in, it was not, um, as an exalt of any enforcement. The second application that is in the mixed-use district, that one came as our office was notified of the Airbnb use. They were issued a notice of violation because they also, um, converted the shed to the Airbnb without any building permits, approvals, um, you know, water or sewer connections that we're aware of. So, that came in as an exalt. Now, with that one that is in the mixed-use district, that zoning, um, uses does have that provision under conditional use, you know, for any use determined by the Board of Supervisors, it's similar, could go through the conditional use process. But at this point, they put in a zoning hearing application for the variance.
Well, um, yeah, that, that's kind of where I was going with that. I thought the second one was more in line with conditional use. The first one is, is a clear...
The first one's a clear variance, the second one, they put it in as a variance, um, the memo that we wrote up, I think they, I think it, you know, was probably stated that it's not a permitted use in that district, so they put the variance application in. Um, I think as part of your comments, and then when this goes to the board, is whether the planning commission and ultimately the Board of Supervisors would consider the short-term rentals to be similar in nature to the other uses that are permitted, um, in the MUR district, such that you can see your way clear to use that catch-all provision, um, for it to be allowed by conditional use, or if you feel that it is different than the other uses that are allowed in mixed-use residential. Um, you know, such as if you feel like it's more of a hotel, you know, type use, then, you know, you can still indicate that it should go for a variance, um, within the mixed-use residential for the other one. There's no type of lodging use allowed by right, you know, the U of single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, allowed by special exception in MUR includes a boarding rooming house, bed and breakfast establishment, multi-family dwellings, assisted living, life-plan community, those are allowed by, um, special exception, which is still before the zoning hearing board versus, um, the Board of Supervisors. So, um, it wouldn't be out of line to necessarily say that it's not similar to any of the other uses that are permitted by right in the MUR, and it still needs to be variance versus qualifying for that catch-all provision as conditional use for the MUR district, so.
I have a question, not necessarily regarding short-term Airbnb rentals, but does the township currently regulate rental properties in the township?
No, they do not have, as far as I know, there is no registration program.
So, there's no rental license, there's no inspections?
Yeah, there is no rental inspection. You see those mostly, the only place we've seen those is actually within boroughs. You know, we've done, we currently do those inspections for Moten Borough, we used to do them for Vecosville. Robsonia Borough used to have a rental inspection program, we don't have one. They still have a registration, but they don't have an actual mental inspection program, um, right now. But I'm not sure that any of our, the townships we serve have a rental inspection program. I think they're more frequently seen with the rentals at a greater density.
Yeah.
Within a borough than in a township, but, um, no, there is no current rental inspection program for normal, like, long-term rentals within the township.
And this property in particular, it looks like there's been a lot of renovations done in the last few years. Do we know if they've all been permitted? Have they got permits and pulled and...
I believe so, because I think that, um, address sounds familiar, but...
It looks like it's over the...
We can verify that.
Well, and it looks like it's definitely over the, it looks like a lot of...
Yeah, I'd have to make sure, um...
So...
It's not a property I remember having enforcement on, you know, that somebody brought to our attention that was construction going on without a permit. We usually, most external construction that's seen is picked up, um, by different individuals in the township that we would hear about it. You know, things are being built without permits, um, that you can see something obvious like that. But I can verify between now and the board meeting, whether or not they did get permits for the expansion you're seeing, with the aerial changes.
So, I guess we'll focus on this first one, which is the request for relief to an Airbnb and an Ag zoning district. So, as we all know, we can support it, we can be against it, or recommend against it, I mean, we recommend to take no position. So, what can I, some personal direction here?
I mean, I can tell the township has some regulations in place, I don't know if they're comfortable. It's wording, yeah, but... I mean, for me, a little bit of a question, I think it's...
I really feel like the township has it too. You can get an Airbnb that's, you know, in a, in a, say, a townhouse development or something, where if these people renting the place are going to cause a problem to a couple of people, it's, it's a little bit different if it's a single-family home as opposed to an attached home, you know what I mean? I think it also depends on where, where it's at.
And those are some of the differences we've seen in the various short-term rental ordinances I've seen. Distinction between what zoning districts they're allowing and the type of dwelling unit. The one I'm working on, I'm in current township, I think they made theirs only single-family detached dwellings, you know, so there's not, you know, you're going to, you're hiring to build, you know, property, and I think they put it in, it might be like their Ag and Resource Conservation, where you have the larger lot sizes, um, you know, you're not in close proximity. But those are the types of things that, you know, Honeybrook pursues, short-term rentals that they'll want to consider is what zoning district, what types of units, um, you know, we talked in some of the other towns, where some of them have like a lot size, you know, requirement, um, and then regulations to be... Not a lot that I've seen have really gone completely overboard, um, but they've wanted them to have, like, register for the township, have a local contact person, so if there is a major issue, there's somebody that lives close by, they can get there quickly. You don't have somebody that lives in Florida, um, has an Airbnb up here, he doesn't have, like, a nearby, um...
Manager.
Um, you know, there's regulations that, you know, to make sure they provide trasher for this.
Yeah, right, when there's regulation, well, that's stated.
Right, I think there is.
It is hard to get them out.
Yeah, that's some problem. I think it's limited, some of the ordinances I've seen are like under 30 days, um, you know, it's kind of what they define as a short-term.
Do the, do the townships, or do they collect a fee then, like, for people who register their Airbnb?
Yeah, I think there's something like annual registration pays similar to, you know, there's annual fees for kennels and rural applications and other things like that.
So, the township would know which ones are registered?
Right, and as I think Susan brought up earlier about, like, some of the, most of the ordinances have requirements about showing proof that you're paying those hotel and lodging taxes and, um, you know, things like that, so. And I can certainly provide you guys with some examples of those short-term rental ordinances, if that's, um, you know, something we want to consider getting amendments in, um...
Well, an Airbnb doesn't necessarily have to be considered separate dwelling itself. I'm not sure if we, the Airbnb, people live in houses, people go away and rent their house, okay? I mean, it'd be the same way here, if someone went away and rented their house, it's like, we want to stay for it, that'd be...
Well, that would be one thing, but if somebody has a separate, like, a shed or something, like, I'm looking at this one here, there's a shed. Okay, that's a second use now on the property, which is allowable. So, you can rent an Airbnb, it would, to me, it would have to be in the house, it can't be a separate, you know, structure. Because look at this one, because I'm curious, I'm looking, I'm looking for a sheet shed. Um, what, where is the, like, sewer and water and what? I'm headed. So, I, I don't know, I, again, that would be a second principal use, which I, I think wouldn't be allowable unless you're in the Ag District, but...
Yeah, and that's what we, but to go then, you know, it's how do we use it on units, you know, if people are going to be saying, you know?
Right, I mean, you know, that's part of the processes that, you know, you obtain the necessary building permits, you show, you get all the ordinance regulations, you know, like we do for the accessory requirements and the ECHOs, you have the water and sewer.
Yeah.
You know, you, you go through those necessary, um...
So, we have this in front of us, is Mr. Good here, or someone represents? Okay. Do you have anything you want to add? We're going to try and, try and get the decision here.
Yeah, well, not really a whole lot, I think there's a lot of good points you're talking about. Um, there's probably like fifty or more Airbnbs within several miles up here that don't have any registration whatsoever, I mean, it's kind of like, there's, there's tons of amount there that, you know. Um, so this, this house here was actually, it was an old schoolhouse, it was built in eighteen ninety. It's a, like, a historic, kind of a very, really neat thing, uh, you probably remember, it's like a long ten down there. Um, it was converted to a house in the nineteen forties, and somebody lived there from the nineteen forties till sometime in the nineteen eighties. I kind of felt in disrepair, it was basically junk pool for the last, um, forty years or so. We bought it, we fixed it up, we would like to do an Airbnb with it, we're not allowed to do that, that's okay. Probably just, you know, see if they're selling, or, you know, it's, uh, could be used as a, both a residential house it's used originally. Um, but I don't know, I think it'd be kind of a neat historic piece, like, if people can, uh, enjoy it, like, you know, one of the historic artifacts, you know, they're, you know, um, they can live in it, that's, that would be kind of, kind of cool, you know, but... Um, but yeah, obviously, it isn't Ag, uh, zoning Ag currently, um, so, I mean, that, you know, that doesn't work then, yeah.
I'll say, I mean, I've noticed it looks a lot better, so, yeah, we appreciate, anytime somebody takes a property like that and approves it, because it makes the township look better. So, you were the one who did the improvements?
Yes, yeah.
Did you pull the permits for all the work and...
We did, yes. Yeah, we got all the permits for all the work, and then I told the township, the lady that works in the office, like, where we're planning to do it, that she said, "We should get a use permit to, uh, to, if you want an Airbnb," so. Um, either I'm going to do it, you know, accordingly, get it officially approved, or I'm just not going to do it, I'm not going to do it undercover or something.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you coming and asking first, because most, like, most people don't ask based on how many there are operating and, um, so...
So, we're not the decision-making body here, where that, we just, we just make recommendations, supervisors make recommendations, and then the zoning hearing board has a final say.
Well, what would be the rule of guess, I know we don't have any word, but do we have rules that are a guess at?
Not really, we don't have any rules.
Just says it can't be...
Right, it's not, it's not a specific use that's listed in our ordinance as permitted use, so we can't allow it, it doesn't need the definitions of, you know, a normal single-family dwelling or things like that, and thus, it has to see what...
And I also think we should define what an actual Airbnb is, because, like, I own this Airbnb site, all these are places in Honeybrook Township, and some of them are actually, like, rooms that are rented, even though it's on this Airbnb site.
Right.
So...
Right, and that's part of the, you know, regulations that come from short-term, those fourty-three definitions. And as you said, they regulate whether, and you're allowed to...
Better move.
You know, like that as an Airbnb is a short-term rental, or if it has to just be, you know, a single-family detached dwelling, or semi-detached, or, you know, what types of dwellings, you know, you're allowed to have those short-term rentals, so.
So, I heard you say that you would take no position?
I think it's hard to take a position when there's nothing really to stand on.
That may be, that, I mean, I, I kind of agree with that, um, I appreciate that you took, took something, made it kind of nice, and probably is, would probably be pretty cool, but...
Yeah, and I think ultimately, for me, as a single, I mean, I think that that would be okay for location for an Airbnb, given we don't really have any regulations. I think it's hard to support, or not support.
So, is that a motion?
I think maybe should have no position.
We'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments? Hold on, favor of no position, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose?
I don't oppose, I don't think we should support it at all, okay? Because of, like, a lot of great questions, because I think we have to as a community decide, do we really want all these permissions, is that...
Right.
I think your property looks really nice on the outside too, and I think it would be a great individual home, but I'm not, I'm not excited about it. And apparently, there's a lot of people doing this, so, so we don't know who's coming in and out of our community, and we're not benefiting from it, we're not getting any tax money off it. I mean, I just, I just don't think it's a new idea for, when we go back to our mission of, you know, who we say we are.
But to a certain extent, that's, that's the role of the zoning hearing board, is, is to kind of take away the vagueness of...
Right. Yeah.
So, if, you said that the bed and breakfasts isn't approved use for Ag zoning?
Yes, bed and breakfast.
So, if I would, if I would have a bed and breakfast there, would that be an approved use?
A bed and breakfast is permitted by right, um, I believe there are other specific use regulations for bed and breakfast within the zoning ordinance. So, I would say take a look at those and see whether you can, you know, meet all of those requirements, um...
Can I call this a bed and breakfast, and then it'd be approved, and is that the, would that be, I mean, I'm just asking?
Well, if you consider it a bed and breakfast, and you would show that you can meet all the zoning ordinance regulations for a bed and breakfast, um, they're in section ten-ten of the zoning ordinance, um... You know, there may be additional building code requirements that come into play, um, there may be additional set that requirements, I'm not sure how, what the sewage flows, how they consider those versus, you know, for a single-family dwelling, it's based upon the number of bedrooms. I don't know off the top of my head whether they count those the same as a bed and breakfast, um, you know, or if it's different than that, um, and...
So, what's his procedure if he, you know, the suggestion is read through the ordinance and see if you can beat the criteria for a bed and breakfast?
You would submit, uh, use an occupancy permit for a change from a single-family detached dwelling, um, which is what your building permit and you know, that's how that was reviewed, um, you know, and then it would be for it to be a bed and breakfast. One of the first criteria in the bed and breakfast section is, shall only be permitted in a single-family detached dwelling, which is the bona fide residence of the operator. So, you know, that's the premise, and as Troy was asking earlier, what the, you know, difference with the bed and breakfast is, it's, you know, the formal home of the operator, and then, um...
So, that would be approved by the zoning officer? And would you come back to the planning, and would you go to supervisors, that would be reviewed by the zoning officer?
Yeah, that would be a change in use, not occupancy permit, have to be reviewed by the zoning officer, and, um, I, it may, I'm not sure what the building code thresholds are with bed and breakfasts, if it's a number of, you know, bedrooms that gets into, or occupants that changes any building code requirements. Um, but they would have to verify that, you know, the way the house is constructed, that it would meet whatever the, um, building code requirements for bed and breakfast use are, so.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so...
So, so our action is to recommend to the zoning hearing board that we're taking no position on? Okay? All right, our list item is another variance request from John Hoffman at two-twenty-one St. Lee Road, and this is also to operate Airbnb facility in an accessory structure.
Right, and this one, um, as I mentioned in the beginning, was from the township discovered there was a existing shed on the property that was converted to an Airbnb without any permits. Um, so, in addition to, you'd have to seek the variance to have the Airbnb itself in the accessory structure. Um, and then as well, you know, if it is granted, you know, he's going to have to then apply for the building permits, you know, show that the house is constructed to the standards necessary under the building code for a habitable structure, and show that they obtain any necessary any necessary approvals, um, from the health department with regards to sewage, um, convection, to the well, you know, anything like that that's, um, required through there. But must be for use, the zoning hearing application for the use itself, um, as you mentioned, this one's in the MUR district. So, you can comment both, you know, one on taking a position on the zoning variance itself, um, as you did for the other one, and second, where we talked about that catch-all provision that's in the MUR, um, you know, if you would deem it a use that's, um, you know, similar to the other ones, you know, that it could be allowed by conditional use. Um, but just as a reminder, I mentioned the straight single-family dwellings, and I think the two-family dwellings were allowed in the mixed-use residential by right, um, but the items that are like a boarding rooming house, a bed and breakfast, um, multi-family housing, assisted living facility, all of those types of items are allowed in the MUR by special exception, which does go before the zoning hearing board, they're not other uses that are allowed by conditional use, so.
Is the shed like a standalone shed?
Yes, it's like a shed, so we have it in regard, and it was converted.
Is there sewer or water?
John, did you, John, you, uh, did you hear Melissa's question?
Yeah, if there was water and sewer in there, there would be water, but not sewer, we did hook that up to the, uh, the house sewer. And I guess, first of all, I gotta apologize, I shouldn't listen on my back, or he said, "Honeybrook Township does not have any restrictions on Airbnb," he said, "It looks like you're free, you know, man." Oh, man, and Dover said, "He don't really think I need a, need a permit," so, nevertheless, I can't blame it on that, I'm here to make it right, so, that's what I'm looking for. But there was water there, and electric, and, but no sewer.
So, there's still no sewer?
Oh, yeah, there's sewer.
There is some?
We hooked it to the house, as I said.
Is that public sewer?
Yes.
It is public sewer then?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not septic, we don't come into it, septic is true.
But is variance, this is a second, like, principal use, is that what the variance is?
Well, the variance is, I guess, you know, both, to have a short-term rental on the property in accessory structure, so it falls into kind of all composite, the two dwelling units, you know, on the property, one being the short-term rental, one being the principal, um...
And that's, that, that can be accepted by special exception, is that what I understood you say earlier?
A second principal use as a special exception?
Yeah, so, I said, so, the provision, the other one that was in Ag is a straight variance. In the MUR district, under uses permitted as conditional use, it lists any other use not elsewhere provided for and not excluded from this district, which is in the judgment of the Board of Supervisors of the same general character as the use committed herein. Anything that would fall into that category could be allowed by... Anything that would fall into that category could be allowed by Board of Supervisors as conditional use. I tend to, if, you know, looking at that provision, I would consider those to be more uses that are similar to either those that are permitted by Wright or permitted by conditional use. You know, would generally fall into that category. The uses to me that, as a zoning officer, that are similar to a short-term rental would include things like a boarding house, rooming house, or a bed and breakfast, which are permitted by special exception, which goes before the zoning hearing board. So, I almost feel it's more appropriate for it to seek a variance than to fall under that catch-all provisions. It's not necessarily similar to other uses that are permitted by Wright in that zoning district. It's similar to ones that are permitted by special exception.
True, but it's considered, it would be considered a second principal use, correct, which you would need a variance for? I mean, technically, there's two residents then, you have the Airbnb and you have the residential dwelling that they live in, so that's two principal uses on that property.
Yes.
So they would need a variance for that regardless of whether it's conditional use or special exception, they still need a variance for the actual second principal use, I mean, as a zoning officer, that's the way I read that.
What's your interpretation as to that, the same, the same...
They share, they share the definition of two-family dwellings.
They would have them be attached.
Correct.
You have to share cooking facilities typically.
Right, under uses permitted by Wright, a building or other structure may be affected, altered or used, and a lot may be used or occupied for any one of the following principal uses. So if it's considered a second principal use, they would need the variance.
Wouldn't you consider that a second principal use?
Yes, yeah, so I, I think it's more appropriately, because it's a second use there, which...
What about accessory, John, that, that didn't?
But it's a second, but, but it's still a second principal use.
I believe, so if we go into, in that mindset, if you want to think about regulations for accessory dwelling units, I believe those are a minimum of two acre blocks, let me just check over.
This is 1.7?
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling units are permitted on properties containing a gross lot area of at least two acres. So even as an accessory dwelling unit, it wouldn't, you know, comply, so. All that being said, and with it being a second principal use, I think the variance that Melissa noted is still needed just for the number of uses, which does fall under five of the two A. But in a general sense, even if it was the only use on the property, I think it's more similar to the ones that require special exception, which go before the zoning hearing board anyway, versus allowing it under that catch-all provisions, so.
So with all that said, we really should be looking at it as two principal uses?
You, it would.
But relief is granted.
So the relief is for both. Right, so if you were to take position on the variance, the variance is to operate the Airbnb in an accessory structure on the property, so you would have both the Airbnb along with the existing residence on the property. So you would take it all into consideration in your position.
Okay.
I can see that being okay in the Ag district, like, on 1.7 acre. I mean, then we've got multiple people coming up wanting to do, the granny pals and all the southern business, you know, putting all these other things on properties, you know what I mean? Like, that's becoming a hot topic.
So, what's, what are you saying?
I'm just saying, like, I...
No, I know what you're saying, but what I'm looking for is...
You would like a position.
Ah, sorry. So what is...
Anyone else with that?
What is the motion, like, what is...
So it's the position of support against or no position on a variance application that would allow a short-term rental within an accessory structure on the property of 221, on the lot that already has an existing principal dwelling.
You know, there, right, does we have to get approval for the... The permits and all, all that?
Well, we wanted, we can't issue permits for the work to be done for a use that's not permitted. So it's kind of, the first step would be for him to be granted eligible to have the use, and then conditions that would go along with this one would be, you know, they can't be occupied as a short-term rental until they obtain the necessary building permits, sewer approvals from the authority, you know, they may require that to be an additional deal, you know, flow for that. So, you know, it's kind of a, you know, it's back kind of to the chicken and egg thing, but we can't issue a building permit for something that's not permitted by zoning. So the first step is to gain zoning relief, and then the conditions of that zoning relief would require, you know, all the necessary permits and approvals from, you know, township and appropriate authorities, et cetera, to be obtained.
Yeah, because, I mean, so if you get this permitted, does, I mean, your taxes, you're going to have a, now, another dwelling essentially. So you're going to be taxed, I mean, this is going to affect your real estate taxes and having another dwelling on a property as opposed to a shed.
You know, if relief is granted, and then a permit issued, that'll trigger the tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the permits won't trigger the taxes regardless.
Like, I would think any work that he had done, he's still going to have to get something with permits for it. I mean, you do electrical work, you do electrical work, they not get any permit for it, I mean, something's got to be done.
Right, I think he said the shed had already been electricated before, but the conversion of it to, from an accessory structure, you know, accessory structures under 500 square feet in height of, early in the zoning permit, not a building permit.
Is that your property in the floodplain?
Yes. Basically, yeah.
So can you even issue a permit?
Right.
Right.
Well, if the shed was already there.
Has a shed, no?
Right, it would have to be.
Does this fall into the, the...
Now, that's the view of the floodplain, that's shown on Chesapeake views. So, I mean, it would have to, you know, meet whatever's in the zoning ordinance, you know, in terms of, I mean, I guess at some point...
Which existing council firm?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you get a permit for a dwelling in a, or a structure of the same floodplain?
Well, the structure's already there.
But it's there, it was a shed.
Right, so we'd have to see what the floodplain regulations and elevations and everything are, and maybe have deemed a floodplain, like, elevation certificate to verify what the floodplain elevation is there, and what the elevation of the shed is, you know, for requirements that would take it up above. Whatever the floodplain ordinance requires, you know, for those types of uses and regulations.
On top of them, taxes, you'd end up having to pay, pay rent charge to have another, for a dwelling.
So, where we want to go with this? There's lots of things to incorporate into my zoning regulations. Is there, is there another category to the decision?
Well, I think if you're, like, basically if it's up to what the zoning hearing board says, you know, if you're in a position, I don't think you're in any position of support necessarily on a basis, and all the discussions in the last one. And then your other position is against, you know, if the other one was in a position, as, you know, a few people mentioned, the other one is in Ag, it's a single-family dwelling, it's the only building on the site.
Speaking to me, that's a far different thing.
That, correct, so, you know, that's the situation of that one. This one is a second, in essence, a second dwelling on the property. That is 1.7, so it wouldn't be the normal accessory dwelling unit, but here, you have the floodplain aspect on this property.
I feel like if you allow...
That it was a shed and...
I feel like if you allow something like this, and everybody wants to turn their upstairs or their garage into an apartment, bam, they could, half of them not get the relief, if you are okay with this, like, I just... I just, I don't... If you want to have a second principal use, be in Ag or have a bigger property, that's just my...
So am I taking that to be a motion against?
I can't say I would take the position against or for, because if I lack, if you put on something that...
So, do you mind if I have a... So, is, is that a motion for no position? I kind of agree with, I kind of agree with Troy with it, because I think there's some more things here, but probably, in addition, even, even if he's granted relief, he may not, he may not even be able to do this on the property because of floodplain issues.
Yeah, so there were those two, something to do.
So, here, is that a motion?
I'm in a motion of, of position.
No position. You got a second? I'll second just to see, just to get a vote.
So, this is a vote on...
No position.
On position of no position, so, I guess we'll go down, vote all, so?
Yeah, we probably do a vote all, or second, so, yes.
No. There, no?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to take the position fails by vote.
Now we need another motion, so...
I'll make a motion, a motion of no support.
I second.
So that's Susan. So we'll do vote all, vote for the position of no support or against, so, there?
Oh, yes, I can, I want to make, want to take some sort of action.
Melissa, would you like to do that?
To her motion?
Yes, to a motion of against.
Good.
No support.
Okay, so four of them. Okay, so the planning commission ultimately took a position of against, it goes to the Board of Supervisors, they'll take a position, and then those positions ultimately get shared by the zoning hearing, to the zoning hearing board, who makes the ultimate decision on it. You know, as they mentioned, in addition to, you know, to get the use variance itself, you still have the other hurdles of getting a building permit, you know, showing, sometimes showing that those sheds meet the building code requirements, you know, can be difficult, as well as any floodplain, you know, regulations, and, you know, additional sewage approvals from the sewer authority and things like that, so.
That's what, that's what you want to do, you want to look into some of those other things before you go to the expense or your priority payment for the zoning, the zoning hearing.
For the line, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's some valid, if it hasn't been... I'm not sure that date's been set yet, that it's been advertised, so there is still activity to withdraw the application.
So if you get out of road, and you get relief from the zoning hearing board, and then you turn around to come back for a permit, and they tell you you can't, you can't build it because of, you know, floodplain, those type of things, kind of a wasted effort.
So at this point, I, I couldn't ask for permits before I get the variance?
I mean, you could request that a building permit review be done, and, you know, agree to pay for those review charges regardless of whether a permit can be issued, or not to determine what hurdles to meet the building code, you know, may exist, and then you can decide if you still want to pursue that zoning variance. So, if that's something you want to do, you know, give our office a call, and I think you've been talking to Ted before, so either talk to Ted or talk to myself, I'll give Ted the highlights of our discussion tonight, and let him know that you may be in touch, so. Okay?
I just have a comment, just for its taxes, you know, there's a lot in the township, I, I don't think you'd be for, with having a small H O T S or something like that, you know, I, I'd be willing to pay that H O T S.
Our, our, that's, that's something, I believe, when this, this ordinance gets a little bit of restrictions, that's, that's maybe what will come out of it.
Yeah, I mean, it has to, or it's going to just get, it's more, and you're going to have the regulations, you know, but...
The other, the other thing is, like, that property out there, I know the township visited it quite a few times prior, isn't it? Like, why how does these little rundown properties actually get cleaned up for something like this?
Yeah, our good example was the gentleman there.
And this was a dump that township stopped in there, because he had junk cars sitting up front. That's one good thing about, maybe thinking about some Airbnb, but...
Yeah, I think there's a time and a place for them, and, you know, it just has to be managed. And now, here we are, and faced with these difficult decisions, and really, there's nothing to guide us.
Yeah, but thank you, John.
All right, thank you. You have known the business, open for anybody that can comment, yes, sir?
What is the definition of short-term rental? I mean, couldn't they rent it to a family, a different family every night of the year?
They, they could, so generally...
I wouldn't want that.
Right, let me, let me see if it lets me access, I can read the definition of a short-term rental that is in one of the draft amendments that I was working on for another municipality, and this definition generally, was generally consistent through the other municipal examples I had found. So, I feel like it's probably a definition that's kind of been generally agreed upon, you know, by the attorneys and powers that bid. So, in this case, it reads, "A single-family detached dwelling in which lodging is designed and provided for transients for a period of 31 continuous days or less in return for compensation to the owner. A short-term rental house is not owner-occupied during the same period as the transient occupancy. The use of a dwelling as an approved bed and breakfast establishment as accessory use shall not be considered a short-term rental." So...
So it's a maximum days, but not a limit?
Correct, it's basically, yeah, anything less than like a month. Time period is considered a short-term rental, you know, versus people that get, you know, owed a house but rented out, you know, for like a three-month, six-month, 12-month lease, for like a normal rental situation, so.
There's a lot of rules that have to be looked at for here, I think.
Yeah, they really started to, the Airbnb's really started to expand, it's been five to 10 years.
And in most rental towns, they have rules or regulations for minimum and maximum days. And I don't, I don't think we're considered, these are power or anything like that, but...
No, but we are definitely seeing across municipalities, we work in several, you know, like, starting stuff, getting these regulations in place, so.
There's, there's a lot of municipalities that are catching up on this, I'm sure.
Yeah. Um, and I just, for your, whenever there's public comment, we just have to put a name and address of the persons. Would you mind giving that to the minutes?
Yeah, Bruce Lacy, 160 Pine Street Drive.
L A C Y?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be like?
Yes.
I guess, right?
Well, I didn't learn it, that's why I thought, you know, but by the time you gave us name and address, I figured, but I didn't want to make assumptions, so, okay.
But going back to your comment, did you say that that was a single-family detached dwelling?
So that's what they, for this example, it's defined as that, because that's what they're proposing to use it as, but let me see if I have...
Because I saw some listings in Honeybrook, like, it was like cozy attic.
So I just saw that one.
Right, so that's one of...
And that is, you're a big parents' neighbor, yeah.
So that's one of the things for, you know, the township to decide, as it quotes these regulations, of what types of dwellings or houses these are allowed. So, for example, like I said, we had looked at other ordinances, Breck Knott Township and Lancaster County, that is generally their definition, they allow solely in single-family detached dwellings, they allow them in their agricultural, forest, recreational, and... Looks like residential, they look like they're allowing them in quite a few of their zoning districts, but again, it's only within single-family detached dwellings, so you don't get the case where you're renting out, you know, there's individual rooms.
Yeah.
As short-term rentals.
I kind of see like an Ag and Orange are a bit different, because the owner is there and it occupies, you know, maybe, but like, it's a different thing to have the whole broad of the place.
Yep, Robeson Township, Brooks County, their short-term rental definition is a dwelling unit or portion thereof that is offered or provided to a person or entity by a property owner or their agent for a fee or exchange for any non-monetary compensation for fewer than thirty consecutive nights. Short-term rental may include whole house rentals, apartments, condominiums, or individual rooms in a house. It doesn't include bed, breakfast, boarding house, or rooming house. So theirs is more generous, and kind of allows it to be all the different, you know, types of units. So I can certainly send you guys some of these examples, and you can see some of them, you know, are making registration procedures, some are over the top, you know, there was some discussion of whether these need to be inspected, and that kind of went by, the one I'm working on in Hurford, he said, "Well, we don't inspect other rentals, like, you ask our general rental inspection program." So why do we, you know, inspect these? That township also doesn't have a property maintenance code adopted, so that makes it difficult to enforce some of those types of things. Here, we do have a property maintenance code in place, you know, so that's, that usually is kind of the basis for the ones that do have rental programs, that's the ordinance that you use.
We should ask the supervisors if they want us to, like, start to put together something to present.
I was going to write that, under other business, if you suggest, the planning commission suggests the township starts looking at short-term amendments.
So we can gather all that that you have.
And then I can send you guys the examples, because I'm the draft I'm working on for Hurford.
I'd probably get there just on a little bit instead of wasting time if they're not interested in it.
If he's not.
I think the board is interested in it.
Right, so I'll put that forth as under other business for the planning commission, that you guys made that request for authorization from the board to...
We're willing to work on it, it's, they're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm just going to work on that, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys basically are looking for authorization to draft short-term rental regulations for segregation adoption.
Do you know if the borough has anything, if they, I mean, because some of these listings are Honeybrook, I couldn't tell if they were township or borough.
I found, I found the draft in the township, I found four in the township. There was one that definitely was in the borough, but I only saw one in the borough, so.
See, we'll look up their ordinance as well, and see if they have any.
I think the borough actually does inspect rentals anyway, so they might have a...
Just a quick, like, there's on E codes, and I just searched for short-term rental, it doesn't come up, but they do have rental unit provisions, like a whole, under their housing ordinance, a whole residential one. So they may fall fully, whether it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental, it may just fall under their general rental unit inspection program. So their definition of a rental unit is a dwelling unit within the borough, including single-family homes, single-family homes converted to multi-family use, rental apartments and similar living accommodations which are leased or rented and not owner-occupied, and which must comply with rental license requirements. So I would think that it may fall under a mental unit for them, but without going fully through their zoning ordinance, you know, I can't say that's the definition of their housing ordinance, so.
Okay, anyone else? Ready to adjourn? Are you motion to adjourn? I second, in all favor?
You have a seat.
You have a seat.
Yeah, yeah.
Dope is, dope is PC meeting, man.